It is now six o'clock, June 2nd, 2022, and I will call this Lacey City Council meeting to order. As we always do, we will start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. So all of those who can rise, please do, and join us and salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for joining us. Our second item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda and consent agendas. Can I get a motion, please?
Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda as published.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Do we have Councilmember Stedman in the Zoom?
I am present, yes, and I vote yes.
Excellent, thank you. Moving on to our next agenda item, public recognitions and presentations. We will be having a public recognition presentation for the Lacey Youth Council recognitions, and here to do that for us is Ms. Kelly Adams, who is the Special Projects Administrator.
All right. So I just have a presentation for you, and that's coming up right now. Thank you for your patience. So, good evening. My name is Kelly Adams. I'm the Special Projects Administrator for the Public Affairs Department, and it has been my honor since 2020 to coordinate the Lacey Youth Council. The... There's the clicker. Thank you. So, is it possible to get that in view presentation mode? There we go. Thank you so much. Okay, so for the benefit of our viewers and our visitors tonight, details on the Lacey Youth Council can be found in the Council Policies and Procedures, Chapter 2.16. This is a group of about 15 high school students in Lacey that come from North Thurston Public Schools, two of our private schools, and homeschool students are also eligible. They meet twice monthly. They have a council meeting and a work session. They do a lot of volunteer and community support. They represent youth at the Advisory Boards and Commissions, such as the Historical Commission, the Board of Parks Commissioners, the Commission on Equity, and what am I forgetting? The Library Board. They report to City Council each month, and they participate in educational opportunities and community service. I feel that Councilmember Romeo Brown actually put it best, and I'm sorry to put you on the spot, Romeo, but when we were practicing our public speaking, Romeo said, "The point of the Youth Council is to be a voice for teens that don't feel like they have the same opportunities, and to share their voices toward people that can actually make a difference." And I thought that was so well put. So, this is our 2021-22 Youth Council. We have Justin Begley, raise your hand, Justin, as our youth mayor. We have Alejandra Lenaris is our deputy mayor. She's been with us for two years, and she's graduating. I'm so sad. We have Alanis Blackburn, Rihanna Joseph, who were both commissioners to the Commission on Equity. They shared a lot of really great feedback. Declan Line was our Board of Parks Commissioners Youth Representative. Hi, Declan. Declan's also graduating this year. Leila Markland was our Climate Issues Project Manager. Leila was an amazing advocate in the community, both in Olympia and Lacey. Nathan Miller from Pope John Paul II High School was our Historical Commissioner Youth Representative. Ryan Hill provided, Ryan, provided a lot of really great social media tips to this older person. Sarah Towne was our Library Board Youth Representative and a delight to work with. We also had Abigail Assari, Hunter McKay, and Romeo Brown as our general council members. But just because they didn't have a title, I will tell you, they were amazing volunteers that jumped in in every opportunity they could. So, our Youth Council this year represented four high schools: Pope John Paul II, Timberline, River Ridge, and North Thurston. Sadly, we were forced to meet remotely for, I would say, about two-thirds of the school year, but what we did is we decided to take that time and really focus on educating ourselves on local government. So, we covered leadership, community planning, parks and recreation, infrastructure, and getting involved. And you see, there's a little maze theme here because we were always talking about growth and complexity, and how as cities grow, they become more complex, and our problems become more complex to solve. And we really focused on what jobs are available to people at different levels of education. So, we had a lot of learning in that time. But once we can meet in person, we hit the ground running. We met with the Commission on Equity for a joint work session where our youth shared their challenges and experiences with diversity, equity, and inclusion issues. We had a voter registration training with the League of Women's Voters so that we could preregister teenagers for voting in the state of Washington. If you're 18 by the general election, you can vote in the primaries at 17. So, this was, we had students from Tumwater, Olympia, and Lacey at this event. And we had work sessions where we practiced public speaking, and they facilitated their own agendas and their own topics that they didn't always agree on, but they always found a way to have respectful discussions that helped them to guide their work. So, this all culminated in Fun Fair, which was our big event where we really got to connect with each other, and our youth mayor, Justin, is going to tell you all about that. But we had a really spectacular, long two days, but we talked to over, gosh, 945 children, 945 kids, teens, and family members. We built this little ping-pong pole of things that we wanted some guidance on what we should work on next year, and that was a fun, not scientific, but very fun, survey. And I want to congratulate Alejandra, Leila, and Declan, and thank you for spending your senior year with us. We appreciate you so much. And if you know of any teens that are seniors, juniors, sophomores, and are interested in local government, we are now recruiting at cityoflacy.org/lyc. Thank you very much, and I present to you Youth Mayor Justin Begley.
Well, hello, everyone. My name is Justin Begley, and I'm the youth mayor for the Lacey Youth Council. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Deputy Mayor, members of the City Council, members of the Lacey Youth Council, family, friends, and residents of Lacey. Mr. Mayor, I'd first like to thank you and the City Council for giving us this opportunity to serve our community. I'd also like to thank the members of this Youth Council for their support and dedication throughout this last year. Finally, I'd like to thank Ms. Adams for her mentorship, guidance throughout this last year. I couldn't have done the things that I wanted to without the support from all of you. These past few years have been challenging for all of us. This last year especially has been challenging for our youth in our community due to the transition from virtual learning to in-person learning. The challenges of virtual interaction is one that this Youth Council is well acquainted with. I would like to think that this Council also overcame this challenge by the end of the year. This Council was also able to come together and work as a team to accomplish some amazing tasks. Some of these tasks include partnerships with organizations, giving input on current events, giving opinions on situations, and planning a successful event. Over this past year, the Council learned about city government and how the city of Lacey operates. I'm personally grateful for this experience, and over this last year, I personally learned a lot about myself and also the city of Lacey. This experience has allowed me to learn new things and meet new people that I would have never known or met in our community. Some examples are members of the Commission on Equity, members of the Thurston County League of Women Voters, and some of the people who work for the city of Lacey. I'm personally grateful for this time that we got to spend with the Commission on Equity to help give our input on very important topics in our communities in hopes to make Lacey a more equitable place. I'm also extremely grateful for the information and help the League of Women's Voters provided to the Youth Council, and I'm glad to see the organization, an organization, spreading awareness to voter registration and voting. Finally, I'm grateful for all the staff that was involved in helping run the Youth Council. This year's Council is very passionate about many topics. These topics included homelessness, global warming, equity, and amplifying the youth voice. This year, we sadly were not able to get to all these topics, but I feel like we made progressive steps forward in all the topics that we got to go, that we got to move for. This year's Council was able to give our opinion regarding equity in Lacey with the Commission on Equity to help their efforts. Finally, two weeks ago, the Youth Council took part in a Lacey Fun Fair. We ran a booth, we ran a polling booth, gaining public input from all members of our community. These people that took, these people that took this poll were from all ages. Our polling station had three opinions, three options. Option one, amplify my voice. Option two, create opportunity. And option three, connect with others. Option one was more geared towards focusing on the youth voice and making sure that the needs and wants of the youth are more seen by city, by the Council, and members in power. Option two was more geared towards jobs, internships, and volunteering for teens, and making sure that those resources are out there for the youth. Finally, option three was geared towards more events and get-togethers for the youth, to make sure that there are opportunities for the youth to connect with one another, especially after the pandemic. Over the two days, 945 people from our community took place in our poll. On day one, the event, on day one, more events was a clear winner, and on day two, creating opportunity was a winner. With this information gained from the public, I encouraged the Parks Department to possibly create more events for the youth in our community, as may the parents and youth enjoy, and as may the youth and parents in our community enjoy these events. Secondly, I encourage next year's Youth Council to focus on making sure resources for job volunteering and internships are more present for the youth to benefit off of, as that was also popular among our parents and teens from our area. Another important takeaway from the Fun Fair wasn't from the polling, but from the reaction that our community had towards this Council. There were many instances where members from our community cried. Many were happy to see a youth leadership group. A lot of people were interested in the Youth Council and wanted their children to join. In my personal opinion, this is the most important takeaway from this entire year. It's important to know that our community supports this effort and wants to help out their members, who wants to help out, and that there are members who want to join. I think the Lacey Youth Council serves as a beacon of light and a model for other youth leadership groups, and it serves as a model for other cities wanting to set up a youth council. Again, thank you, City Council, for this opportunity and great experience, and thank you, members of the Youth Council, and Ms. Adams, for your hard work and support this last year. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Alejandra Lenaris, and I am representing North Thurston High School. This is sadly my last year in the Lacey Youth Council, but I know you all have a year more, or probably two years more, in future members that can join, and you'll love it if you join. I have had such a wonderful experience joining this Council. I've met wonderful people, and a wonderful mentor and supporter, and number one cheerleader, Ms. Adams. I learned different structures of our government and how Lacey works things. I also learned that even though we have different, like a different idea, we both, we all have different perspectives on how to accomplish it. So, that was pretty cool. I am so glad I got to join and got to work with some of you, and thank you very much, and have a wonderful evening.
Hi, my name is Ryan Hill, and I'm also representing North Thurston High School on the Lacey Youth Council, and I am so incredibly thankful for the opportunity that I've been given to work with the Youth Council and the wonderful members of the Youth Council and Ms. Adams, who has helped us through all of it. And I think more than the opportunities we've given, you know, so many youth, it's also important to look at the opportunities that the experience of being on Youth Council has given all of us. And, you know, we truly have learned so much about the city, the way it works, city government. We've been given opportunities to talk to leadership, to learn about things, and it's really helped, I think, all of us have a much better outlook on how the city works and how we can truly make a change in our community. That was my favorite part of being on the Council, and I would encourage anyone that has kids or children in their lives to please join because we learn so much and we've accomplished so much. Thank you.
Hi, so my name is Declan Line, and I'm representing Timberline High School. Real quick, I want to thank all of the City Council, and of course, Ms. Adams over there, for the great experience I had. So, as she said, for the first two-thirds of this journey, we were over Zoom, which kind of delayed a lot of things we could do. But thankfully, towards the end, we had the Fun Fair, and I want to touch on that real quick. So, a lot of the kids that came up were really young. So, they were there playing with the balls, you know, tossing them in, but it was the parents that were engaged. The parents are listening, they're understanding, okay, there are youth that do have a voice, and the youth can speak to the order. So, I thought that was, you know, really amazing and kind of cool just to let people know that the City Council is, or the Youth City Council is a thing, and that the youth are being heard. So, again, just like Ryan said, if you do know any youth in high school that are interested in having their voice heard, go ahead, go to that link, and it's just a wonderful experience. So, again, thank you all.
Good evening. I don't, you know, have anything planned like Justin did, which, by the way, great job, Justin. That was amazing. I would not have been able to do what you did. I would have been so nervous, shaking, paper going everywhere. But I was really grateful for this opportunity, and I'm sure my fellow members and mentor was grateful to have us here. And honestly, everything that we did was really just touching, to me, especially being able to show how we touched the community and the parents and kids, how Declan was saying, how even when we were at St. Martin's, giving our presentation, trying to build up relationships in the community, even if our, the little kids that came up throwing the balls and stuff messing around, the parents were still able to engage, and it was able to show how we were able to make an impact on just anybody that was able to listen to us, because the whole reason why we're here is to show that we also have a voice for the youth, and not only just adults making all of our decisions. So, it was really impactful for us and also the youth to be able to show that no matter what, even if you feel like you don't have a voice, or you feel like you can't make change, you always can, and someone's always listening. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you all for being here, and thank you, Ms. Adams, for putting this together. Before you guys leave, do you guys mind if we just shake hands? And we just want to congratulate you guys for doing what you're doing. I really appreciate the Youth Council and what Kelly has put together. Seeing the youth get engaged in civics and have a future, potential future in it, is very exciting. But one of the things that I know and realize is that each one of those kids has 20, 30, 40 friends who are, you know, sharing their thoughts and ideas. Maybe they're not, you know, ambitious enough to come forward, but they do have something to say. And so, you know, with having somebody, a friend on the Youth Council, I think we are getting a good representation of what the kids in the community are thinking, and their desires, and their hopes, and some of the things that are bothering them or irritating them, their wants and needs. So, very proud of that young group. Our next agenda item is public comment on items not on the agenda. We have one person who preregistered to speak via Zoom, and it looks like we have two people who signed up just before the meeting. No written comments were received, so there's nothing to read into the record. Public comment is the opportunity for community stakeholders to inform the City of Lacey Council of their respective views on issues or items. As a reminder, the Council does not engage in dialogue with the public during public comment. When you are unmuted, or when you are in front of the microphone, please provide your name and city of residence. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes to speak and provide input. I think we're going to start with the people who are present in the room, and then that way, the administrator can queue up the Zoom person. So, I would like to call Jeff Broling to the podium if you are here. Please state your name and city of residence, and try to keep your comment to three minutes.
Jeff Browning, thank you for having me. It seems kind of unfair to make me go after those amazing young people. I'm a Lacey resident and property owner, and I'd like to bring to your attention a contradiction that seems to exist, or at least a tension, in the Lacey Municipal Code 1636-010 that says, quote, "Limit such development to areas where..."
Deputy Mayor, this comment relates to a matter that's before the Council today in a quasi-judicial matter. This is going to be, this is part of a written record.
This is a general matter that applies to every situation that the city would encounter.
Certainly. I would just caution Council, and I would suggest that this comment is related to a quasi-judicial matter that the Council is going to be considering. It sounds as though the comment is going to be related to the interpretation of municipal code sections that are part of a conclusion that a hearing examiner used in a recommendation. So, I would suggest Council not listen to this comment.
Sir, if your comment is in regards to a code that will be reviewed tonight, we cannot have comment on items that are on the agenda this evening, whether directly or indirectly.
Well, I was here two weeks ago, and the City Council canceled a meeting, so, and it wasn't on the agenda then. I don't think I should be... I don't think I should be restricted from speaking to it, and it refers not just to what you might be considering tonight, it refers to how the council does its business and conducts public affairs and input.
Okay, so just to be clear, if it's something that we may be having some type of review tonight, and it's something that's in the code, we will have to put this, your comment, in a future council meeting, one that does not have anything to do with what this code 1636.010 is referencing. That is critical. I don't, I'm not trying to shut you down, I'm trying to preserve a quasi-judicial process.
I understand that. On the other hand, I was here two weeks ago trying to speak, and the city council canceled the meeting.
If I could address that just briefly, with all due respect, had the meeting two weeks ago not been canceled, had that comment been before council at that time, I would have the same objection to the council listening to it. The application was completed some months ago, and there can't be any comments provided to council outside of the closed record, and that record has been closed now since the end of April.
Would you like to just kind of overview and brief the quasi-judicial process so that we have clear understanding?
Sure, I can do that now. So certain matters that come before the council are before the council when the council sits in a quasi-judicial capacity. So that's opposed from a legislative capacity when council would be amending code or creating code, adopting legislation. So in a quasi-judicial matter, that's typically going to be in a land use decision where an application is brought to the city for review. In an instance where it's quasi-judicial in nature, that means that the application is reviewed by staff and a recommendation is given to the hearings examiner. The hearings examiner then conducts an open hearing and creates a record based on testimony and evidence that's provided at that hearing, reviews all of the evidence of the record, then reviews all of the related and applicable laws, and then makes a decision, or rather a recommendation, to the city council. And a recommendation in a quasi-judicial matter from the hearings examiner is brought to the council, and when the council considers that recommendation, the council is limited to the record that was before the hearings examiner. Anything outside of the record is considered ex parte, and the council cannot consider it, and I caution the council from engaging or listening to any ex parte communications. Once the council reviews the recommendation of a hearings examiner, then the council can either approve, modify, or deny that recommendation, but it's critically important that council limit its decision to what is in the record. If it's proposed by anybody, either an opponent or a proponent for an application, that council was influenced by matters outside the record, that's grounds for overturning of, it's grounds for an appeal, for example, and it puts the council members individually in a compromised role. So there's a doctrine of law called the appearance of fairness doctrine that mandates council not partake in ex parte communication, and it's that basis that I'm recommending council not engage in it during public comment right now. So it's not an option.
So would you say that Lacy Municipal Code 1636.010 was part of that record?
Correct, for my, correct. The statute that's been brought forth during public comment right now by Mr. Browning is analyzed in a recommendation before council tonight. So it would be inappropriate for the council to take any information outside of the record in their decision-making process. Is that clear?
But my comment is not pro or against.
Counsel, I...
Any project.
Sir, it's, as the city attorney just spoke, it violates state law for us to take in any testimony, pro or against, regardless of your position on it. We can't listen to your testimony tonight, so if you have something to say that doesn't relate to this, you're welcome to come back in another council meeting, but we can't have you speak to us tonight on this topic.
Sorry about that, sir. Our next person who signed up for comments for items not on the agenda is Jenny, it might, I don't want to mess up your name, Jenny, is it Gessler?
Yes, Clark.
Gessler. I think we've seen you.
I know, here I am again.
Once or twice before, it's very good to see you again.
I wasn't busy tonight.
Okay, and just please state your name and residence, city of residence, and try to keep your comments to about three minutes.
I'm Jenny Gessler, city of Lacy. Other things I could have been doing tonight, but I thought I was already here wearing orange, so I'd talk on something else that I'm so passionate about, and I really don't want to follow the youth that spoke so eloquently, that I will butcher for sure. So be the change that you want to see in this world, be the change when you're a military spouse who can't wait to get out of this community, be the change that you want to see in the world when you only have two more years to serve here, because we have to live here. I am extremely, for those of you, this is a lovely audience, for those of you that have not heard me speak before, I'm frustrated. I am frustrated with the crime, I am frustrated with not feeling safe, I am frustrated with the homeless situation, and so when I can, I bug these people, and I talk about the same stuff over and over and over again. So that's what I'm doing again. I would probably be even more passionate if I had not had a conversation with chief, correct, and this officer over here, so I'm a little bit more batten down. Otherwise, I'd be even more passionate. If you're making an impact, I don't believe anyone knows. I don't believe it's being communicated out on the street. I try to stay informed, and what I see and what I read does not show me that we are making an impact in this city. I don't know if you need to do a paper newsletter, I don't know if you need to talk more about that at your city council meetings than some of this other rigmarole we discuss, but I don't believe if what he says is true and he says is true that your community knows that. I left my house at 6:30 Sunday night on the holiday weekend. I drove down Marvin Road, I drove down Martin Road, and I ended up at Fred Meyer's, going for some groceries. I encountered 14 people that appeared to be living on the street because of behavior, because of crawling out of the woods, because of sitting at the intersection, carrying on. So if what you're doing is making an impact, and if we're different than our very fluid boundaries, unfortunately with Olympia, I am imploring on you to get that out there, because what we are seeing, what we are hearing, and what we are experiencing in residence in our own property and as we are out and about is not showing that. Okay? Okay, that's my passionate statement. Thank you for your time. Bye.
Thank you for your comments, and, you know, this is a subject that, for us, is also comes up daily, the email traffic that we get, the letters that we get, the comments that we receive. In fact, we receive so much traffic and comments that we had to put together teams and amend our budget to begin to go after this issue. After your last appearance here, Mrs. Gessler, I reached out to the Department of Transportation because I wanted to know, too, you know, what are we doing? What is the plan? And after this last legislative session where we received a lot of dollars, the state received a lot of dollars to be able to clean up the roadways, you know, we have been policing and monitoring and cleaning up state right-of-ways for at least a year and a half, somewhere in that ballpark, hiring people, keeping track of the dollars that we spend, and we've seen a reduction in homelessness, we've seen a reduction in the amount of mail traffic that we receive. We receive so much less than we got a year and a half ago, but we still have a ways to go, and I have reached out to the Department of Transportation. I want to know what their schedule is for their cleanup, because I want to be able to post it so that you can all see it. I want to be able to post it on our website, get it out in our mailer so that you guys can understand when this is going to happen, not just, oh, somebody's, you know, the cleanup is going to happen. I want to know exactly when it's going to happen. So I've reached out to those people and actually asked our city manager to do that follow-up work so that we don't have, that we're not guessing when this stuff is going to be cleared and cleaned up, and we're going to be able to see, you know, more visible improvements. If you haven't seen any improvements, maybe that's upon us to do better documentation, maybe even some video documentation, some photos, and so on and so forth. For example, the mound over there at Slater Kenny, the off-ramp mound where it was 20-something people living there, we sent our mobile outreach team to go there on a daily basis. And one of the things I want you guys to understand about the homeless situations, a lot of these people want to live off the grid, a lot of the people want to not have interaction with society, and one of the things that we found, and I hope that Olympia follows this, is that when we had daily interaction with them and tried to set some goals with them and actually paid for some of them to go home, their families didn't know where they were, we were able to make contact and send them back to where, you know, people who love them are at. When we started making that daily contact, our numbers just kept getting smaller and smaller until there was nobody left on that mound. And so we just took a very much more of a caring approach towards the problem, and we saw the problem get smaller and smaller and smaller. And so some of the visible areas, I know that our city boundaries are kind of interesting, and I tell people all the time, you know, when you look at the city map of Lacy, it really does look like it was drawn with an Etch A Sketch by somebody who was not 100% there, because you, you know, it's, when you look across the street, you think it's Lacy, it's not. We get mail from people saying, hey, I think there's supposed to be streetlights in my neighborhood, and I want this address. Well, unfortunately, sir, you're not in Lacy, otherwise you would have streetlights in your neighborhood. So we understand that the boundaries are kind of jagged, and sometimes what you're looking at may be in the city of Lacy, it may not be in the city of Lacy, but it's so ingrained in our jurisdiction that oftentimes we end up policing it anyway. So I just wanted you guys to be aware of that, that we have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars working on this issue, so it is not being ignored. We have attacked it in such a way that I think we're spending more than some of the other jurisdictions, and we are getting better results, we just have not reached the finish Our next agenda item is, oh, I'm sorry, there is one more comment online. Was that, is that person ready for their comment?
That was actually Ms. Gessler, so she's already spoken.
Okay, excellent. Moving on in our agenda, it looks like we have, is there a public hearing portion for agenda item number five? Okay, proclamation is next. Agenda item number six, Ride Transit Month in the city of Lacy, and with that, I will, I have, do I have Ann Freeman Manzanares?
You do.
Hi, thank you for being here. Please, the floor is yours.
Well, thank you. I just wanted to say, on behalf of Transportation Choices Coalition, who represent transit riders throughout the state of Washington, and then more locally, of course, Inter-City Transit, who is a public transportation provider for Lacy, Olympia, Tumwater, Yelm, and the unincorporated urban growth boundary of Thurston County, I wanted to express appreciation to the city for recognizing June as Ride Transit Month, so thank you so much.
You are very welcome, and we have a proclamation that we will be reading, and we'll be starting with Councilmember Vasquez.
Thank you. Whereas, on average, public transit provides almost one-quarter of 1 billion passenger trips in Washington each year, and?
Whereas, during COVID, transit agencies continue to provide more than 100 million annual passenger trips for essential workers or essential rides, as well as pivoting to bring other services to their communities, including delivering meals, groceries, and prescriptions to people with disabilities, seniors, people with low incomes, and people with special transportation needs in their community, and?
Whereas, transit agencies in Washington State invest almost $5 billion in transit capital and operations each year, and? Anybody read statements?
Whereas.
Oh, he's got it.
Can you, everybody hear me?
We got you, Mike.
Whereas, transit in Washington State reduces 371,000 metric tons of CO2 emissions per year. If all people driving alone were to shift transit, we could save 130,000 metric tons of CO2 emissions per year, about equal to 28,272 passenger vehicles driven in one year, and?
Whereas, almost 25% of Washingtonians cannot or do not drive and may rely on transit, and?
Whereas, greater transit use is associated with higher levels of physical activity, which is associated with lower health risks and better health outcomes, and?
Whereas, trips are 10 times safer per mile than car trips, and that a person can reduce his or her chance of being in an accident by more than 90% simply by taking transit opposed to commuting by car. And now, therefore, I, Malcolm Miller, Deputy Mayor of the city of Lacy, on behalf of the Lacy City Council, do hereby proclaim June 2022 as Ride Transit Month in the city of Lacy, and encourage all residents to consider using public transportation when possible. Signed by me, Deputy Mayor Malcolm Miller, June 2, 2022. In addition to that, I'd like to say that with bus service still being free for the next three years, is it? Four years. I'm not sure if you guys are aware of that, but if you get on a bus, there is no cost. You don't have to pay a thing, and so it is that way in the entire county? In the entire county. So please, enjoy the bus, enjoy public transportation, and we will move on to our next agenda item, which is a referral from the Planning Commission. I'm sorry, from the hearing examiner. This referral is a multi-care conditional use permit, project number 21-306, and presenting will be the senior planner, Sarah Schelling. Hi, Sarah.
Good evening. Good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Before you tonight is the hearing examiner's recommendation related to an application received at the Community and Economic Development Department for a conditional use permit to develop a 10,000-square-foot emergency medical office building with associated parking, stormwater, and landscaping improvements on five parcels located at 4312 Pacific Avenue in the Lubin District. It's about 1.96 acres. Andrew Reeves, the city of Lacy hearing examiner, conducted an open record public hearing on April 19, 2022. The hearing was held as a Zoom webinar that allowed for public testimony. All hearing notices provided and issued included information necessary for members of the public to attend the virtual hearing. At the hearing, city staff and the applicant provided testimony and exhibits related to the project for the examiner's consideration. No members of the public attended the hearing for the emergency medical department. The full record before the hearings examiner, and now before you tonight, included community and economic development department staff analysis, application materials, technical reports, and studies related to the project, comments from city staff and other public agencies, a few emails from the public, and testimony at the open record hearing. And now before you tonight is the full record, which also includes the hearings examiner's recommendation that was dated May 3 of 2022. The hearing examiner is recommending approval of the project and details his recommendation in the document before you this evening. Staffs available to answer procedural questions related to this project, but first, I'll turn things over to the city attorney, Dave Schneider, to discuss some additional procedural items related to this topic tonight.
Thank you, Sarah. Councilmembers, as previously mentioned, this is the first of two hearing examiner recommendations on the agenda this evening. This is a application for a conditional use permit that was complete, received in complete form by the city on January 5, 2022. The hearings examiner has created... January 5, 2022. The hearings examiner has created the record and made a recommendation to the city council based on that record. The council, in its quasi-judicial role, will now review the record and the hearings examiner recommendation, or has already reviewed the record. Council is reminded that it needs to make its decision based on the record, and the record alone. And council may do one of three things. Council may either approve the application, may modify the application, or may deny the application. The, any approval would theoretically be done by adoption of the hearings examiner's findings of fact and conclusions. Any denial or modification would need, council would need to articulate the findings of fact and conclusions of law that support council's modification or denial. The appearance of fairness doctrine, as previously stated, is at play in quasi-judicial matters. And it requires that government decision-makers conduct proceedings in a manner that is fair and unbiased in both appearance and fact. The doctrine prohibits any ex parte contact, which puts council in a difficult position between being responsive to constituents and responsible to the process. However, councilmembers that have engaged in ex parte communication are required to place the substance of any communication on the record, and allow any involved parties to rebut the substance. So, the ultimate test is going to be whether a fair-minded person would conclude that the decision-maker was impartial and free from outside influences. So, to that end, I am going to ask each councilmember a series of brief questions. Councilmember Vasquez, do you have any personal interests that would be affected by making a decision on the requested conditional use permit before council now?
No.
Councilmember Vasquez, have you had any ex parte communication concerning the requested use with either proponents or opponents while this matter was before council?
No.
Councilmember, is there any reason why you cannot consider the requested application in a fair and impartial manner?
No.
Councilmember Kunkel, do you have any personal interests that would be affected by making a decision in this matter?
I do not.
Councilmember Kunkel, have you had any ex parte communications with any proponents or opponents during the pendency of this matter?
I have not.
Councilmember Kunkel, is there any reason you cannot consider the application in a fair and impartial manner?
No.
Councilmember Cox, do you have any personal interests that would be affected by making a decision on this application?
No.
Have you had any ex parte communication concerning the conditional use with any proponents or opponents during the pendency of this application?
In my role as a councilmember doing, speaking to various community groups, the question has come up, but I have refrained from commenting on it, explaining the council's role in a quasi-judicial process.
Is there any reason, I'm sorry, Councilmember Cox, is there anything further?
That's it.
Okay. Is it, with that understanding, is there any reason why you can't be impartial decision-maker in this review?
No.
Councilmember Greenstein, do you have any personal interests that would be affected by making a decision in this matter?
No.
Have you had any ex parte communications concerning the application while this matter was before council?
So, in my role as the Chair of the EMS Medic One Board, the topic came up for conversation. I recused myself from the conversation, and refrained from being involved in the conversation or the vote.
So, is there any reason why you cannot consider the application in a fair and impartial manner?
No.
Okay, Councilmember Miller, do you have any personal interests that would be affected by making a decision on this application?
I do not.
Councilmember Miller, have you had any ex parte communication with any proponents or opponents while this matter was before council?
I have not.
And Councilmember Miller, is there any reason why you cannot consider the application in a fair and impartial manner?
There is not.
And then, Councilmember Stedman, I presume you can hear me okay?
Yes, David, can you hear me?
Yes. So, Councilmember Stedman, do you have any personal interests that would be affected by making a decision on the conditional use application?
I just have a concern. I'm alternate with Lenny on EMS, but I'm also heavily involved in Thurston County Emergency Management. I've been to the retreats and all that, but we haven't discussed this in any fashion that I'm aware of, or that I can remember.
So, have you had, so that is to say you haven't had any ex parte communication with any, either proponents or opponents regarding this matter?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't think so. I would say no.
Is there any reason you cannot consider the requested application in a fair and impartial manner?
No, I wouldn't think so.
Okay. Council, that's the, well, I would ask whether there's anybody in the public that wishes to raise a challenge based on the appearance of fairness doctrine. And seeing none, I would refer back to council for its discussion on the application.
Is there any?
Would it appropriate to make a motion then, before discussion?
Certainly.
So, I would move acceptance of the findings of the hearings examiner on the Multi-Care Off-Campus Emergency Department Conditional Use Permit 21-306.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Vasquez?
Just one item that struck me as I was reading the packet. This conditional use permit came in well before we made changes to the regulations related to electronic vehicle charging stations. So, they're not obligated to include that in their development, but I would recommend that it be considered, because we're moving in the direction of having more electric vehicles.
Got you. Councilmember Greenstein?
Just make a quick comment, and that is that I think this is sorely needed in our community. We have an incredibly large lack of emergency room beds. Our current hospital situation is not adequate for the population of Thurston County. So, any additional emergency room beds, I think, would be greatly helpful to the system as a whole.
Councilmember Stedman?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just to put in context, if I make any weird noises or something, I went to the chiropractor because I've been having back issues. So, it's spasming. So, if I do something off note, then that's putting it next. I've looked this over, and I know there's been traffic studies and such. And we all have been through the last couple of years and understand that for a good portion of those last couple of years, people have not been out on the roads as much as they were when restrictions were in place. It is really just more of a concern than anything else, but I wanted to bring that up, because, you know, the data could be skewed possibly, being in a pandemic, you know, months or a year ago plus. And that's my only concern, though. I 100% agree with Councilmember Greenstein. This is desperately needed. This is a, you know, it's emergency basis, if you ask me personally. People die if they don't get care when they're, when they need it, and it's urgent and critical. So, that's my only concern, and that's why I'm asking the question.
And I agree with you as well. The need for more hospital beds is probably greater than any of us realize. And I only realize it because Councilmember Greenstein briefs on it in some of his briefings that he has, and talks about how we, I probably can't say it as well as he does, that we send people, there's a rotating, you know, hospital situation, where sometimes they go down south, sometimes they go up north. We have, can you articulate a little bit better the real need?
We've had multiple times when we had to go on diversion. You know, there are only two hospitals here locally. We have Providence, and we have Capital Medical Center. And there are times when both emergency rooms have no room to bring anyone else in, to the point that we've had paramedic, you know, transports, transport a patient there, and sometimes have to wait hours to transport them out of their vehicle into the emergency room, just because there's nowhere to put them, and no one to take care of them. So, it's a critical issue in our, in our community. And there have been times when we've had to transport patients up into Pierce County, you know, to St. Joe's and some other hospitals, just because there's nowhere to bring them here. We're doing better at the moment, but as we come into summer, the concerns get greater, because hospital, emergency room visits are far greater in the summer. So, that's the peak time of year for that. So, it's a definite concern.
It really is, because we are short on hospital. I was happy to see that Hawks Prairie got a care facility. It was much needed in that area. But we are spread kind of thin, when you consider that, you know, we're 300,000 people with, you know, just a couple hospitals. So, it has been moved and seconded.
And if I could interject?
Please.
I hate to be a stickler here. The motion was to move acceptance of the findings of the hearings examiner. I'd suggest council amend that motion to move to approve the application and adopt the hearings examiner's findings of fact and conclusions of law, if that's council's goal.
That is exactly the meaning of the motion that I made.
So moved.
So, that would be a motion to amend it?
Yes.
And is there, there need to be a second?
And I will second.
And that will need to be voted on? The amendment will need to be voted on?
It has been moved and seconded, and it has been discussed. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 And so, that's, that's the amendment. And so, now we have a motion before the council to approve the application and adopt the hearings examiner's findings of fact and conclusions of law. And now, we need a vote on that.
Well, then, I'll make the motion.
It's already made. We just have to call for the vote.
Oh, then I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Aye.
I think that was in favor, not in opposition.
You may want to double-check that.
Mike, was that in favor, or was that opposed?
No, in favor. There's just a delay.
Okay. Well, that motion passes unanimously. And we, with that?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And with that, we will move on to our next agenda, item 8B. This is the Meridian Market and Gas Condition Use Permit, project number 20-310. And this will be presented by our Senior Planner, Samara Seymour. Can you take yourself off of mute?
Yes, thank you.
Excuse me, if I may, Samara, is David, are you going to ask individual questions on this agenda item? I think it's 8, 5B, or just like you did the previous meeting, or the previous hearings examiners? Or are you going straight into it?
I will go through a similar question and answer, but I'll state now that if there is any councilmember that has any conflict, or now would be a perfectly appropriate point in the meeting to articulate that. Or we can go through the question.
Well, that is why I asked, David. So, I'll be removing my, the decision-making process of this agenda item to avoid any concerns in my participation that would have me with the appearance of fairness doctrine. I apologize, and if someone can contact me once this portion of the meeting is over, I'll rejoin the meeting.
Thank you, councilmember. Please proceed, Samara.
Okay, sure. Thank you. All right, good evening. Before you tonight is another recommendation from the hearings examiner for a conditional use permit application to develop a 4,000-square-foot convenience market with 1,000 square feet of second-story office space, 4,000 square feet of commercial space, for fueling islands, and other associated site improvements and amenities. The site is located at 8808 Campus Glen Drive Northeast. Lacey's hearings examiner conducted an open-record public hearing on April 12 this year. The hearing was held as a Zoom webinar that allowed for public testimony. All hearing notices provided information necessary for the public and interested parties to attend the virtual hearing. City staff, the applicant, and members of the public provided testimony and exhibits for the hearings examiner's consideration. The full record includes staff analysis, application materials, technical reports, and studies, comments from city staff and other public agencies, 417 emails and letters from the public, testimony from the open-record public hearing. The full record is listed in Attachment A to the hearings examiner's recommendation, and is posted on the city's website in full, including a recording of all the testimony from the public hearing. The hearings examiner is recommending approval of the conditional use permit, and as is outlined in detail in his recommendation. Staff will be available to answer procedural questions. However, now, I will turn it over back over to our city attorney, Dave Schneider, for further procedural information. Thank you.
Thank you, Samara. Councilmembers, so this is the second conditional use permit before council this evening. So, I'm going to go through a similar discussion as I did for the last matter. The conditional use permit, the application was in complete form and submitted to the city on March 19, 2021. Subsequent that time, the hearings examiner has created a recommendation and made, created a record and made a recommendation to the city council based on that record. Council, again, in a quasi-judicial role, has reviewed the record and the hearings examiner recommendation. And now, council needs to make its decision based on the record, and the record alone. The council may approve the application by adopting the hearings examiner's findings of fact and conclusions of law. The council may modify or deny the application by findings, by adopting findings of fact and conclusions of law, which support the council's decision to either modify or deny the application. Again, the appearance of fairness doctrine is at play in this matter. Again, the doctrine requires that the decision-makers conduct this hearing and all hearings related to this matter in a manner that's fair and unbiased in both appearance and fact. So, I will be asking each of you additional questions. They'll be the same questions that I asked in the last matter. Councilmember Vasquez, do you have any personal interests that would be affected by making a decision on the requested application?
No.
Councilmember Vasquez, have you had any ex parte communication, either written or oral, concerning the application with any proponents or opponents while this application's been pending?
I received a great deal of email. I did not respond to any of those emails.
Councilmember Vasquez, can you describe the content of those emails, or can I ask what you, what you, what was your response upon receiving those emails?
I received many, many emails from folks in the community concerned about the conditional use permit application. I would say 97% of the email traffic I saw was opposed to the conditional use permit.
Is there any reason, having received that correspondence, is there any reason that it's going to affect your ability in making a decision tonight? And is there any reason you cannot consider the application in a fair and impartial manner? Councilmember Kunkel, do you have any personal interests that would be affected by making a decision on the application?
I do not.
Have you received any ex parte communication during the pendency of this application?
Yes, I have. We have received very many emails from local residents, and like Councilmember Vasquez had stated, about 97% were opposed in their comments to approving this, approving this gas station.
Is there any reason, considering the written communication that you've received, that you cannot consider the requested application in a fair and impartial manner?
No.
Councilmember Cox, do you have any personal interests that would be affected by making a decision on the application?
No.
Councilmember Cox, have you had any ex parte communications during the pendency of this application?
The answer I gave the first time around, I felt we were like a thing for both periods. So, I have the question when I was doing public speaking. So, you know, we can't comment on this, talk about it. And I perceive the same emails that all councilmembers have. The vast majority of the dozens and dozens, hundreds of emails from others.
Considering the communication that you received, is there any reason that you cannot consider the application in a fair and impartial manner?
No.
Okay. Councilmember Greenstein, do you have any personal interests that would be affected by making a decision on the requested application?
No.
Have you received any ex parte communication regarding this application?
Like all of my fellow councilmembers, I've received, you know, Like all of my fellow council members, I've received, you know, a lot of emails. Unlike them, I have replied to those emails. And for the most part, I won't say I've caught every one of them, but the vast majority of them. My answer was always the same. It was that because this is a quasi judicial situation, that I couldn't discuss the matter, but thank them for reaching out to council.
Considering the written communication that you've received, is there any reason that you cannot consider the requested application in a fair and impartial manner?
No.
Councilmember Miller, do you have any personal interests that would be affected by making a decision on the application?
I do not.
Councilmember Miller, have you received any ex parte communication regarding the application?
I have.
And can you please articulate the substance or the basis of that correspondence or that communication and how you dealt with it?
I received, like my other council members, I received lots of emails. And I actually received some handwritten letters from, from people who were vehemently opposed to this situation, to this section.
So Deputy Mayor, considering the communication that you've received, is there any reason why you cannot consider the application in a fair and impartial manner?
Yeah. I drove out to the site and talked to the people who live there. And I viewed the site personally. I walked it. I went to the park. I hung out. And I came to, I think I was, I came to a very similar conclusion. I think I was biased.
So in considering the application tonight, you do not believe that you can be fair and impartial?
I, if, if that means.
It means that the decision that any council member or you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, any decision that is made tonight has to be made on the basis of the record alone.
Oh.
And, and.
I can, I can make a decision based on the record alone. I, are you, are you asking?
I'm ask, I'm asking if you feel biased in your decision-making process and if you believe you can make a decision in a fair and impartial manner without influence outside of what is presented to you in the record.
I do feel I've, I've, I've been biased by my, my trip to the, the property, my communication. But I mean, I can.
Can you recuse yourself?
I think it would be in the, in the best interest to recuse yourself from a decision-making process.
All right, then I'll recuse myself.
That's okay, yeah. So with. So the council will need to select a chair for the remainder of this portion of the meeting.
How do we go about that process?
There would need to be a nomination for someone to chair the portion of the meeting until the deputy mayor returns. And then a second, and then a vote.
I'll nominate our senior council member, Lenny Greenstein.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to nominate councilmember Greenstein as chair during the pendency of the remainder of this hearing. So there'd be time for a vote.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing no opposition. Motion carries unanimously. So we have.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Does anyone in the audience or attending via Zoom wish to raise a challenge of any of the council members based on the appearance of fairness doctrine? And I do see one person. So if you could please come forward. And if you could please identify your name and address for the record.
My address? You didn't ask anyone else for their address?
Well, we're creating a record now. This is part of the record.
Distinct from the previous? It doesn't matter. I'm on record anyway. My name is Sarah Daniels. I'm a resident of Lacy. I live at 9212 Perrywinkle Loop Northeast.
Ms. Daniels, can you state to whom your challenge is directed?
I would like to challenge, does it need to be one of the council members?
Yes, that's the only basis we're here right now.
I can't challenge the report itself.
No, no, no. We are only talking about an appearance of fairness violation on one of the sitting council members.
Okay, fine. Then what I would ask of all you city council members in the appearance of fairness, I just want to be assured that you have read the entire report.
So.
That's what I ask.
Thank you for your time.
If you've read the report, I'll be satisfied with your vote.
So seeing. Seeing no additional challenges based on the appearance of fairness. I apologize. Sorry, sir.
My name is Ron Hall. I lived here from 93 to 99. When I was in the Air Force.
Can you state your address, please?
When I was in Germany for a while. Oh, my address is 8972 Campus Meadows Loop Northeast in Lacy. I live right down the street from where.
Mr. Hall, can you please, we're here specifically.
I'm sorry, sir.
It's okay. We're here specifically to address appearance of fairness challenges against a particular council member.
Okay, Mike, okay, yes, sir.
You need to direct your challenge at a particular council member.
Okay, it's at all the council members?
Okay, so that's not what we're here to talk about right now. So this is specifically.
But yes, this is a challenge. It's a question.
It's not, we're not here to ask questions. We're specifically, the only question.
You know, you really like to shut us down and protect the city.
Sir.
But it's freedom of speech, sir.
That's my role here.
It's our first amendment. If you keep shutting down.
Excuse me, sir. During this, during this.
I have one question. Will you let me talk?
No, sir.
Did you guys go visit the site?
Counsel, there's no obligation to.
Didn't look at it?
I'd suggest pausing the meeting.
Did you go look at the site, folks? You all sit there.
We would ask you to please step back.
You didn't do environmental impact and you started the meeting with, it's bus mode.
I'm going to call this meeting temporarily adjourned.
Correct. And how long would the council like to adjourn for?
Until the crowd can, five, five minutes.
You didn't even go and look, but you're going to vote for it.
I was not there. 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 I was not there.
That completes my role. I will turn this over to counsel for consideration of the hearings examiner's recommendation. Staffs on board with any questions related to the record itself, and of course, I'm available for any procedural questions that may arise.
First, I'd like to entertain a motion before we have discussion. If someone would like to make a motion?
So moved.
I think you might need to give a little bit more on the motion than that.
Moved to approve Meridian Market and Gas Condition Use Permit Project Number 20-310.
Do we have a second? I will second the motion. Is that motion, does that need to be amended?
I would suggest previous, as I suggested previously, it might be appropriate to amend the motion to approve the application and adopt the hearings examiner's findings of fact and conclusions of law, if that's what counsel's intent of the motion was, to approve the application as presented.
Mr. Kunkel, is that amendment to your motion acceptable?
It is.
And I would second that.
And then there'll need to be vote on that amendment to the motion?
Before, after discussion, or before?
Well, that's the first mo, that's the pending motion right now, is the amendment.
Okay. So, all those in favor of the amended motion, please say aye.
Aye.
It's of amending the motion.
Of amending the motion, yeah. Not of the motion, but of the, of amending the motion, yes. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously. Okay, now, discussion on the actual motion. Is there any discussion?
I have some questions, but I wanted to see if, this woman says she has a procedural question. Can the attorney answer her procedural question?
It, counsel's request.
I'd like her to be heard.
And if the, if the, I'll just alert counsel that if I feel the question is improper, I apologize, but I'm going to suggest that, that the question not be asked, but I'm just throwing that caveat out there.
That's fine. I, I think counsel's in agreement that we're open to a procedural question, if you'd like. Please, go ahead.
I have a question.
Could you come up to the front, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Martha Green. I live at 4343 Dudley Drive in Lacey. My question is simply, under the law, and as I understand it, this is a judicial process, is a no vote or a yes vote, are both of those options regarded as being potentially impartial?
I'm not sure that question's appropriate or relevant at this particular time. If counsel has a similar question, I'm not sure I understand the question.
Could you elaborate on the question?
Sure. So, you have the option to approve or disapprove, and...
Counsel, we're engaging, we're engaging with the public on a quasi judicial matter.
Okay.
I understand the counsel's desire to engage with the public, but I strongly advise counsel not engage with the public in this matter. I apologize.
Yeah.
This is not actually a legal question. You're, it's more, you're asking opinion of where we stand. We're going to have to ask...
No, no, I was not asking that. No.
We're not going to be able to entertain your question at this time. Under state law, quasi judicial matters have to be confined to the, the record, the, the closed record that the hearings examiner has presented before us. Our decisions have to be made on that and solely on that. So I'd ask that you please take your seat. Thank you.
Pro form, that's all, that's...
I would ask you to please not comment any further, or I will close the meeting and we will have to leave the room. So if you'd like us to vote in public, please refrain. Thank you. Is there any, any other questions from counsel?
Yeah, I, I have some questions of staff. One, and I think it's more for the benefit of the, of the audience here than the counsel, is can you tell us why this did not come before the planning commission, before it came to the hearing examiner and counsel?
So, this is part of the land use permitting process. Land use permits do not go before the planning commission. Those are, land use permitting processes are either done, as Dave said at the outset of the meeting, either administrally administrative or quasi judicial, and none of those pathways cross through the process, the planning commission process. Planning commission is an advisory, is an advisory board on policy.
And just to add on that, that point is, as Samra has mentioned, the planning commission looks at advisory on planning and policy and implementation regulations. They set the rules. When they get to the permitting stage, it goes through the permitting process, which goes through a different process through the hearing examiner, and that is why it doesn't go through the planning commission first. They, they have set the policy and vice counsel on policy and, and implementation, and the permitting is a, the quasi judicial, more technical review of implementing those policies and regulations.
I also have some questions about the traffic study, and if you can't answer it, please say so, but I noted that a traffic impact analysis was not done because the record says that there was such an analysis on a project for that same site that apparently did not go forward. But this just leads me to question whether, you know, how, how much local eyes were placed on the traffic situation out there, and was, the older study was the effect of the pandemic, which had a significant drop in traffic, taken into account?
The hearing examiner looked at that question, and on page 18 of his recommendation, item 54, he summarizes testimony that addressed that issue related to the traffic, and also included that in part of his conclusions of law. That is on page 21, conclusion, at the end of conclusion of law number one. That's where the hearing examiner took that testimony and addressed those issues in his written recommendation.
I'm not sure you really answered my question, though, Rick.
Yeah, I don't think so either.
I mean, the, the nub of the question were, were any local eyes, because it was an outs, outside firm that did the traffic study out, out of town. They relied on the, the international traffic engineers model for objecting traffic. We didn't do the local analysis, so were local eyes put on that site in determining the impact of traffic?
In the hearing examiner's recommendation, on page 18, item 54, he summarizes staff's review of the traffic information, and summarizes that testimony there, and then addresses it in his decision, in his conclusion of law, on page, conclusion of law number one, page 21. So he does recognize that local staff, so he likes to staff review that information, and then he based his decision based on that testimony.
Okay. Well, sorry, I don't mean to be argumentative. I just, it seemed like the local staff review decided that they didn't need to do a traffic impact analysis, unless I'm misreading it. I'm sorry.
Indeed, that testimony addresses the rationale why a traffic study was not addressed, and why they went with the traffic generation, and that was the testimony presented to the hearing examiner, and he incorporated that information into his decision and based a conclusion of law off that testimony from staff expertise.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Anyone else on counsel, any questions or comments? I don't hear any others. I, I will make one comment. You know, this is, this is one of the more difficult things that counsel in general has to deal with, is when we have a hearings examiner report that comes before us for decision. And it's difficult, because as elected members of your counsel, we hold it as our responsibility to represent the people. That, that's what we're elected to do. However, I just want to make it clear, the decision-making process on this, because of the quasi judicial system, this is state law. We, we are following state law. We cannot make this decision based on our opinions, based on the, the public sentiment. The decision has to be made based in law. So if in fact, we, any of us were to vote no, and that, we haven't voted yet, so I don't know where anyone's going to vote, we have to be able to state the reason. We have to be able to give the law that supports that decision. So I, I just want to make it clear that none of us take this lightly. You know, I've been doing, I've been on this council for over 10 years, so we've dealt with several of these quasi judicial matters, and they are by far the most difficult thing, I think, that we deal with as a counsel. But I just want to make it clear that we do have a legal obligation to follow the law. With that, is there any further comment or questions from anyone on counsel? If not, I'll call for, I will call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it, and the motion carries. Thank you very much.
Can we clarify?
Sure. Well, let's take, excuse me, let's take, let's take a roll call vote, please, since it was not unanimous. Councilwoman Vasquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Kunkel?
Aye.
Councilmember Cox? I'm sorry.
No.
And Councilmember Greenstein, yes.
Good job.
Okay, that concludes that part of the agenda.
What about the water study and the 2022 water report? We didn't have that information.
We are, we are now moving, the, we are now moving on to the next item of our, our agenda. I assume, Councilmember Miller's?
So if you want maybe to take a two-minute recess, we'll put Councilmember...
We are going to take a two-minute recess to allow Councilmember Kunkel to rejoin us and take over the meeting. Thank you.
The staff did not present the information for the 2022 water report in this, in this
Great, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Good evening, counsel. For your consideration tonight as a bond reimbursement resolution, this is really in relation to the proposed new police station. A significant amount of work is in front of us, but we've certainly gotten to some critical milestones. The city council, of course, authorized the memorandum of understanding to buy about 12 acres of property from the St. Martin's Abbey, as well as authorize a professional services contract that will give us the schematic design for the new police station. It is very likely that debt financing will be needed for this project. We are about to start spending money on this project with that schematic design, so it is really good timing to talk about the future debt issuance. So in anticipation of the debt issuance, it is recommended that this resolution be adopted by the city council. This resolution will help the city avoid arbitrage rebate. An arbitrage rebate is a federal tax rule that occurs when issuer, issuers issue tax-exempt bonds, presumably at a lower rate than market, and then invest the money into taxable investments, thus making money on the barrel of debt, and that's something that the federal government does not want to allow. So if we do have positive earnings on those bond proceeds, we have to rebate that back to the federal government. And it doesn't matter if we actually earned the interest or not, it's calculated and presumed that we did. So the, one of the most applicable exceptions to this federal tax law is to spend the money as quick as we can. So if we spend the money according to certain thresholds, there's a six-month, an 18-month, a 24-month threshold, so the faster we spend the money, thus less likely we will be paying arbitrage rebate. So the calculations do start the second we receive bond proceeds, but what we can do as an issuer is we can pass this resolution, and we could declare eligible capital expenditures as expenditures that will be reimbursed on the bond proceeds. In other words, that gives us a head start in spending the money. Otherwise, the expenditures don't actually start until we issue the debt. So this would give us a head start, thus allowing us to meet that 24-month requirement. Yes.
Question on that? So if we were to take, make the resolution and allow to, to start gathering that debt that we're going to reimburse for, is there some timeline on when we have to then take the money, when we have to then borrow the money? Because, or can we wait as long as we want on that? Is there a timeline?
There are regulations for that as well. In general, you have to issue debt within the three years of that first expenditure. But that, that is part of the reason before you is a, a delegation-style resolution. So what this resolution does propose is you, the council, delegate that authority to the city manager and finance director, so we have that maximum flexibility in terms of timing, as well as the amount to be issued. There are certain requirements within the declaration that have to be met, one of which is a description of the project, another is announcing how much debt will be issued. So those are things that we want, you know, the very most flexibility to put us in the best position. So again, this resolution does delegate that authority to the city manager and finance director. I will state and remind the council that this does not authorize the issuance of debt. It does not authorize the actual expenditures for the new police station. Those will be separate actions taken by the council in the future. So this does not obligate the city for any of that. There is an example of what we will use to make that declaration. It's Exhibit A in the resolution, if you want to review that. But the staff recommendation is that you do adopt the resolution, thus delegating that authority to the city manager and finance director. I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
I would move adoption of the bond reimbursement resolution number 1117.
Second.
It has been moved and, it has been moved and seconded. Is there, is there any discussion? Seeing none, sir.
I would, I would just make a comment, which I think it makes perfect sense to, to do this at this time. We've discussed this at the finance committee, and it gives the city the max flexibility. It allows us to not borrow the money until we need to, but to start spending it, to give us as much time as possible to pay it back without winding up owing the federal government any money. So the last thing I think any of us would want to do is pay any of their, our local tax dollars to the federal government, so...
Is there any, is there anything else? Do we still have Councilmember Stedman? Has he been brought back in?
I just came back in right now.
Okay. Do you have any comments on this matter?
Is this the bond reimbursement resolution?
It is.
1117?
Mm-hmm.
Now, I'm ready to vote.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Are there any opposed?
Aye.
Seeing none, the motion passes. Thank you.
Something about that delay.
Troy.
Thank you.
For your report. That brings us to our, our next agenda item. Just give me a minute to catch up. Tonight's been kind of interesting. Resolution number 1118, council policies related to public comment. And this time, we have our assistant city manager, Shannon Kelly Fong.
Well, good evening, Deputy Mayor and council members. As presented at the last work session on May 26 during the 2022 legislative session, there were some changes made to the Open Public Meetings Act regarding meeting accessibility and participation, and in effort to align with the new Open Public Meeting Act language, it's recommended that the Lacey City Council make modifications to its longstanding public comment practices. And to do so, it's recommended that the city council tonight adopt Resolution 1118, which would amend the Lacey City Council Policies and Procedures Manual, specifically chapters 705, 707, and 708, to align with those new, new OPMA changes. I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Are there any questions? We went over this, I think was, was in our, our work session last week, and I, I thought all the changes were, were, were pretty helpful. I, just so that we can, so everybody's clear about, you know, the changes that we are making. I, I don't want you to go in, through an exhaustive process to, to define the changes, but I, I think there were some updates that were made to the Zoom capabilities and having the ability to remote into all city meetings. Is that right?
Correct. And in the staff report for this resolution, there is a table, and it's Table A, and it does provide an overview of all of the changes with the OPMA language, and then the changes that the city is making. The city, as the deputy mayor just commented, is currently making all public meetings available online and in person. But some of the biggest changes here, specifically for the modifications in the policy manual, is on public comments. And so really, just clarifying that public comment can be received orally or by written submission before regular meetings or final action is taken.
Awesome. Go ahead.
I think it is important to point out one other thing, because the most important change here, the biggest change really to the public is, in the past, we've always accepted public comment on things not on the agenda. Going forward, we will accept public comment both on things not on the agenda and things on the agenda. Isn't that, is that accurate, I think?
Correct, provided it's not a quasi judicial matter, or there is a public hearing specific to that item on the agenda.
Thank you.
Okay. So I think we're all clear on some of the changes going forward. I think they're going to be helpful. And I, we get a motion, can I get a motion on this one?
Oh, I thought we already did, I'm sorry.
1118.
Moved to approve Resolution Number 1118, council policies related to public comment.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there, is there any further discussion on this matter? Seeing none? All in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? And that motion unanimously?
I vote...
Was that a delayed yes, or was that a?
Yes, delayed yes.
Okay.
I'm off by like three seconds, I think.
All right. One, two, three. Okay, so we unanimously pass that motion, and that takes us to our, our next agenda item. Under ordinances, I don't appear, it doesn't appear that we have any items. We have nothing under the mayor's report or the city manager's report. Do you have anything? No? And it, okay, with that, we should be able to move on to standing general committees. First up, I, I think we're, we have Community Relations and Public Affairs. Is that you? That is the mayor, and he has an excused absence tonight, so we will be moving on to the next utilities.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So our utilities committee met.
Actually, Matt, hold on, Ed, that's actually me.
Oh, okay.
Community Relations, I, it, it was a really quick meeting. It was on May 2nd, at 11:00 AM, myself, Ed Kunkel, and, and Councilmember Carolyn Cox were present. We got a briefing on the city's communication plan. Shannon Kelly Fong briefed us on the draft communications plan, and it highlighted the context, outreach, primary input sources, goals and objectives, and target audiences. And they'll be coming to, to the full council soon in the work session here in June. I think, I believe it's the next work session, and we could even take action, I believe it's a, a council meeting at the end of the month. That is my report.
Okay, thank you. Utilities?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So utilities also met May 2nd, in attendance, myself, councilmembers Stedman and Cox. We had a water main maintenance and repair update from Ed Andrews, Water Maintenance Supervisor, and I got to hand it to these guys, these folks, rather. They handle a lot of volume when it comes to maintenance and repair of our water systems. We have over 14,000 valves in our water system. We have them inspected approximately every three years. We have 4,000 fire hydrants, 10 separate brands as part of our water system. So there's, there's a lot to do with our water systems, and seeing how they handle all these critical features is very impressive, and I greatly appreciate our public works and what they're doing. And that is my report.
Okay, and next we have the transportation committee, which is mine. Transportation met on May 3rd, and one of the key topics that we were discussing in, in this particular meeting was the EV charging stations that we have planned for the city. We were, we had to pause some of that action, and, and, and part of it is because there is a, there is a FHWA kind of rule that says you have to have, you know, made in America chargers. And so, you know, because of supply and supply chains, we weren't able to get the, all of the parts by, in, that fit in the Buy America plan. And so the, the project will have to be re-advertised. We will be able to do the infrastructure, but the, the type 2 chargers, we won't be able to do just yet. We can do the type 3 chargers. The project will be re-advertized. Again, the infrastructure will be completed. We will, we will wait until a vendor has American-made type 2s before we install those ones, but the other ones will go forward. The type, type 3 will go forward, and that one is a, is a supercharger. That one can charge a vehicle in like 30 to minutes to an hour, and then we will wait for the type 2s. The 22, 2022 overlay currently under design. The paving work for Martin Road and Hawks Prairie, there will be paving work in, on Quinault and Galaxy, on Campus Highlands, and Nelson and 43rd, and we'll also be doing the work on Rayner Road. As many of you know, that road got flooded out, sustained water damage, and that will be on the list to do as well. Because of, of supply chain issues, again, a, a lot of this is going to be pushed over until next summer. We don't want to pave over in, in the wintertime. One of the paving projects is right in front of the bus barn, and so it would just cause all kinds of problems with kids and schools and buses. And so a lot of that work will be re-advertized in September, and the completion of that work, well, that work will start in, in spring and summer of next year. And, and the Terry Cargo Reservoir is due to be completed in spring of, of 2023, I believe. That project has, is a 400 working day project. If you've been out in the Hawks Prairie area, you, you may have seen this if you've gone out from Marvin Road far enough. I'm sorry, the Hawks, Hawks Prairie Sister Stand pipe. The museum site demo is complete. If you've, if you've been in that area, you've seen that, that, that structure is all the way gone, and we will be having a food truck plaza there for as long as we can, until we break ground on a new museum. Also... Also, in, in the Transportation Department is the Sidewalk Repair Program. These are done with TBD dollars, and the, the South and Reiner Vista Parkside work will be done this next year. It's basically designed to, you know, fix tripping hazard. A lot of times, trees push up concrete and pavement, and so, you know, trees will have to be replanted. All of this is, is designed to, you know, keep the canopy that we have. I know we, we have a lot of concern about cutting trees and, and not having enough canopy, but this is one of those programs and projects that, that we do to make sure that we have the appropriate amount of canopy, but also don't have tripping hazards and trees that break up sidewalks and those types of things. And that is my report. Moving on to Boards and Commissions, it looks like we have enough time to, to really just get this done. Some of us were the, under the impression that this meeting might last so long that we wouldn't have time for this, but here we are, and it's not even eight o'clock. So I'll go first. With the Economic Development Council. The EDC met on May 25th, and first on our agenda was the Family and Children's Center that the YMCA has proposed. The goal is, is to, you know, have greater success for kids in early, early years and early learning. We don't have a whole lot of early learning facilities in the city. And so the, the proposal is to, to put an early learning facility, you know, I don't know if you guys, on Marvin Road where, across from the rack, not the big empty field, but where the old baseball fields used to be. So some of you guys might know that area. And so that is the area that YMCA is proposing, that we put an early learning facility, a pretty good sized one. Three early learning centers, Mountain Views, The Meadows, and Pleasant Glade. It's kind of a preschool, co-op. So this, this, the entire design, I think that when the program, the project is going to cost like 63 million, so, you know, ramping up for that and getting funding for that is, is of course, always the biggest challenge. But we also saw this when we went to the North Thurston Public Schools Joint Work Session with the City of Lacey, which we were all at, and we saw that, we saw the same thing there. I've been advocating for indoor entertainment for kids for years. We, we don't have enough of it here in the city. We have great parks, and everybody loves our parks. I love our parks. You know, we, we get to see the, we get to do the 3rd of July thing over at Reiner Vista, which draws the entire community out there, and, and if you haven't been there, it's a lot of fun. But for the nine months of rain that we get, it's, it's pretty much, you know, Netflix and Playstation, if you're a kid. And so it can, it can be, it can, it can be a little much. And so I've been advocating for this, I'm glad to see that there's a plan in the works. And let's see.
Malcolm Fomé?
Please.
I just wanted to comment briefly on the closure of Buttonell Field, named prior to that. I believe the Early Learning Center is a great, great thing for our community, especially when children at that young age where they just take everything in as a, as a sponge, and it's remarkable what that establishment or that facility would do for our youth in the community. But it is sad, because it replaced a field that had a lot of history in this, in this community, and it brought a lot of outside people spending their disposable income from other cities. And I said it, I think it was five, six years ago when the park closed, that it would never open again. And I knew that, and this just proves that. And so I know for every door that closes, one opens. But, you know, I, I like to see in the future, using tools of, you know, transferred development stuff, you know, between the city and the school district and any of our partners, to ensure that we get the best of both worlds. You know, we can have awesome facilities for our youth and have things for them to be physically active and live a healthy lifestyle while attracting people to our community. So it was worth commenting on. I'm happy and sad. You know, it's, but we move on and we do the best we can with what we have today. So, thank you.
Totally agree. And, you know, the, one of the things that, that was presented in this, in this presentation by the School Board this time, not the YMCA, at the EDC meeting, but the state has identified the North Thurston Public School District as a childcare desert. Those are not my words, those are the words that were spoken at the meeting. And the, it, it's also widely known that Lacey Parks and Recreation works very well with the school district, and so that is one of the, one of the reasons why the YMCA decided that this is the place, that they want to make this happen. And I'm, I'm really hoping that this is just the first of, of many of these, because developmentally, of course, you know, internationally, we, we have fallen a little bit behind. If, then the earlier we can get these kids in, the better for everyone involved. And that is my report. Next, we have Councilmember Cox.
Alrighty. I have three things to report on tonight. I'll start with the Climate Action Steering Committee. We met on May 23rd, and we routinely at these meetings hear from at least five or six individuals, and the theme this time, as often is, is about protecting trees. There's just, we heard a lot of public concern about that. Some of the meeting was procedural, we're looking into doing a charter and rules update. One of the things that we approved was creating a Citizens Advisory Group that will meet, I think quarterly, to advise the Steering Committee and to look at monitoring carbon emissions, keeping up with that sort of data. We also discussed financial strategy. There was some interest in trying to create a dedicated shared regional fund to deal with both projects too big for an individual jurisdiction like Lacey to handle on its own, and perhaps smaller projects that could save time without having to go through every single jurisdiction. So more to come on that. We also heard from Stephen Crop from the Center for Responsible Forestry, who spent quite a bit of time talking about the state of the Capitol Forest and the kind of overwhelming loss of what are known as legacy trees in the forest. There are literally in Capitol Forest, no old growth left, which is kind of sad to hear. Their, their big concern is that, you know, there's a plan to restore 10 to 15% of forested lands, but at the rate of cutting that DNR is allowing, it's not going to get there. It's going to be more like saving 6 to 8% of the lands. So there's probably going to be a letter coming from the county on that. We may or may not be asked to sign on to it. Okay. The LOT Clean Water Alliance met on May 11th. We got an overview of what the budget process will look like. It'll take three meetings on that. There's going to be an ultra-high-efficiency toilet rebate for those interested in that. A $50, it's $100, and a $50 Energy Star rebate for washing machines and water-saving kits. So anybody who's interested in those can contact LOT. This program has saved over 1.3 million gallons per day over the course of that, so it, it is a good thing. The Capitol Lake Consulting Group, let's see, did a presentation on April 19th and talked about, you know, what management of the lake would look like. LOT is interested in that because it would have to share 25% of those costs. And that for LOT could look like $300,000 to $1 million a year for sediment management, depending on which of the management projects is chosen. We're going to hybrid meetings, starting with the June, I think, the June meeting, and we will not meet in July. And then Regional Housing Council. Robin, is there anything you'd like to say about the, the two retreats? Because Robin covered for me, I was out of town on a family emergency.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I was relatively fresh to the discussions at the Regional Housing Council retreats that happened last month, but it was nice to be there. I think everyone involved, service providers, community members, city staff, folks from the elected officials from the county and the cities, all acknowledged that this is a shared regional issue and that we need to work together to address the issues. We don't have all of the decision-making mechanisms or the structure for the future of the Regional Housing Council sorted out yet. That was part of what we were talking about, was what is the structure going to look like? How many staff will we have? What is the authority of the Regional Housing Council versus the cities and the county independently? But there was a lot of relationship building that happened in the room that I think will be beneficial going forward to solve these challenging problems. So I was glad to be a part of it.
Thanks, Robin. And at our most recent Regional Housing Council meeting, we invited the participants to share, you know, what they found significant and interesting about the meeting and what didn't. And we're trying to set a path for getting a more formal governance system in place. I mean, there's, there's a lot of weeds I could go down into, but essentially, it looks like we're going to be able to use some, some funding to actually hire a director and a couple of reporting staff that will be able to help steer this Regional Housing Council. Because right now, it's kind of cobbled together between what Lacey and Olympia and Tumwater and Thurston County can contribute in staff time and in the council members who are representing them. And it's, it's a little hard to get traction and momentum that way, because everybody's overworked. And I really want to appreciate the efforts of Lacey's staff to date on this, because it's required a lot of work. And I will be quiet now.
Thank you, Councilmember Cox. Next up, we have Councilmember Greenstein.
Thank you. I just have a couple of quick reports. I sit on the EMS Council for Thurston County, and in that capacity, they've asked me to sit on the West Regional EMS Council, which is made up of a multi-county region. And I went to my first meeting on that yesterday, and there was just one thing that I kind of wanted to mention from that meeting. Lacey Fire District 3 has been the recipient of a grant from the council, a Senior Safe at Home Grant. They're using that grant to actually go into homes in Lacey and help people make their homes more safer, both for fire and for fall prevention, and put that money to really great work, and it's helped dozens of members of our community in a really positive way. And it has actually reduced calls. So several of these homes that they've done the work on have actually had calls for fall-related issues, and since putting in these safety bars and doing some other things, they've not had any repeat calls to any of the homes they did the work on. So I just wanted to give a shout out to Lacey Fire District 3, they're doing great work on that one. Oh, thank you. The other, another quick one, TCOM, Thurston Communications, our 911 service, the other board that I sit on, had our meeting yesterday as well. Just a couple of things from that meeting. We have seven new hires who have just completed their certification training, and are now in the training where they're actually sitting with other dispatchers to learn the actual process of doing that. Seven is the largest group of hires we've ever had at one time in TCOM, and it comes at a supercritical time, because we are short, extremely shorthanded. And these people are working crazy hours right now, so it's going to be very helpful. Also, the organization is contracted with a counseling company to start getting some help for some of our counselors. You know, it's, it's really tough work. People don't think about it, but you're taking calls from people that are in their absolute worst possible time of their life when they're making those calls to 911, and some of those calls can be really tough. So we've, we've hired a counseling company to help some of our dispatchers with some of that. Also, there's a new 988 mental health emergent crisis line going into effect on July 16th. So similar to a 911, but this is specifically for a mental health crisis. So if someone's in crisis, someone's failing suicidal, that type of thing, this is a number they can call to get help 24/7. This number will be staffed at all times, and the number's 988, so a simple three-digit number. And then the last thing I want to report on is the radio project that I've been reporting on for quite some time from TCOM is underway. It has been pushed back a little bit from what we expected. It looks now that completion will probably be first quarter of '24, and most of that is just because of supply chain issues. We've not been able to get some of the equipment, and the equipment is now finally rolling in, and some of the installation work is underway. And in fact, I believe the Sheriff's Department has said about, about half of their units have the new equipment installed now, and it'll be working through all of the departments.
That's, that's the digital to analog, or analog to digital transfer?
It's all of that new equipment, yep. Exactly, yep. And that is my report.
I don't think a lot of people realize that we've been on analog for...
Forever?
Forever. Yeah. And next up, we have Councilmember Stedman.
Thanks Deputy Mayor. I have no report, but I have a couple of, just quick comments, I'm trying to find my... Community Action Council meets on the 15th, it's a retreat, and they'll actually incorporate the board meeting as well. And Thurston County Law and Justice Council doesn't meet until at least next month. But I did want to recognize our very own Deputy Mayor, Malcolm Miller, I don't know if you can see that there, but he's, it's not working too good there. But anyways, it's a picture of him and Joe Downing and Sylvia Lovelace, they're new, there's eight new board members on Thurston County EDC. Malcolm, I know you can do a wonderful job, you have a brilliant mind, you know, a business-minded, a community-minded person, you have common affect, and you're going to be great. I'm excited to see what comes out of the EDC in the near term. That is my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Stedman. Next up, we have Councilmember Kunkel.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. So our Visitor and Convention Bureau, we had Experience Olympia and Beyond, their annual meeting yesterday at Indian Summer. Our CEO, Annette Pitts, gave us a state of tourism update for Thurston County, and the tone of her update was very positive, as tourism and visitors' activity has increased significantly since we have come out of the governor shutdown. For, oh, too many spots. Lost my, lost my place here, sorry. For SWAC, we also met yesterday. There were three items on our agenda, potential South County transfer station update, the Use Food Well Washington Plan presentation, and a quick managers' update. So regarding the transfer station, the efforts are focused with community feedback on a practicality and demand of a new transfer station. There is a focus group that will be engaging with the public in the next few months. Use Food Well Washington Plan is a reflection of recent legislation that is mandating a significant reduction in organic food waste going into our landfills, requiring an organic collection plan to be adopted and implemented by our cities and counties. I have emailed all of the council regarding this information, and I do recommend that we have a conversation as a council and put it on our agenda in the near future. And my last note of the evening, Flag Day. Flag Day is June 14th. Every year, our Thurston County Realtors host a Flag Day event at the Lacey Civic Plaza, and this year is no exception. I encourage my fellow council members and city staff to attend if they can, to honor our American flag. That is my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Kunkel. Councilmember Vasquez.
I'll bring it home. I have a couple of short reports. The Intercity Transit Board met and talked about the Martin Way Corridor Study. This council had a briefing on the same topic last week, so I don't need to go into great detail, but I do think that the Martin Way Corridor Study, the phase that it's at now, where we're looking at a couple of different options for the future vision of that corridor that stretches all the way from Olympia up through Lacey and up north. I think we have an opportunity to lead in this space, to come up with a, a vision for that, that helps build more housing.
that, that helps build more housing, helps support transit, and really sets the tone for the future. I know there are a lot of different competing interests in the Martin Way Corridor, but I, I do think that right now, if we decide for ourselves what we want the future to look like in our portion of the Martin Way Corridor, that it can be very influential for the rest of the conversation between the county and Olympia and the community. We also talked about the Intercity Transit Board having set aside a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to upgrade the Lacey Transit Center. So the roof's too small and the gutters don't do their full job and they're going to upgrade the roof and the gutters so that people waiting for the bus in Lacey don't get rained on. I thought that was nice. For the ORCA Board, we met and talked about the ninety-day review for the new director. He's doing a great job, Jeff Johnson, so he got a glowing review. And then we had an update on the emissions inventory. So for the newer board members, just a review of all the different emissions tracking that goes on in our community. You know, the, the short version is that emissions have been going down consistently, which is good. The last item on the agenda that I wanted to share with this council for ORCA was they're considering changes to their rules regarding recreational fires. So as folks on this council probably know, in Olympia, Tumwater and Lacey, recreational fires are prohibited within the city boundaries. ORCA was considering changing their rules to allow for what they described as survival fires, so fires for warmth and food preparation for unhoused persons. So there was some healthy discussion about that during the ORCA board meeting. And the question was asked whether we wanted to create that survival fires category in the ORCA's rules or if we wanted to consider allowing recreational fires or at least addressing whether or not ORCA should continue to exercise a compliance activity around recreational fires for everyone. So that's kind of up for debate right now. We didn't make a decision on it during the meeting.
Can I ask you a question on that?
Please.
Was there a discussion or a conversation regarding the, the fires for the unhoused as far as the danger of that? I mean, a lot of that's in wooded areas and we've had significant fires caused from some of that already. Are they, is that part of the conversation, I hope?
Yeah, they wanted folks to go back and talk to like the fire districts, so I want to engage with Lacey Fire to find out from their perspective what the risks are. Because I think Lacey Fire would prefer that we not have fires in general, much less out in wooded areas. But ORCA's perspective was that these fires are happening, but if we adjust the rules, maybe we can require some compliance around some of the more important things like the size of the fire and the type of fuel that's being used, so not burning garbage, for instance, which is a bigger problem than if you're using dry cured wood. So they haven't made a decision yet and I welcome your comments or feedback on this rule that's up for debate in ORCA. And then finally, on TRPC, no report because we meet tomorrow.
I'm very excited about the Martin Way Corridor Study. You know, there are some cities who have that one long, consistent theme all the way through multiple jurisdictions and, and that's the real goal that we're trying to accomplish here. So if you take a look at Martin Way where it starts down at State Street, it's, it's a very different-looking Martin Way when it gets to, let's say, Lacey, which is, looks different than when it runs through Thurston County and then it turns into Lacey again and then it turns into Thurston County again and then it turns into a freeway. So the, the long-term goal is to create something a little more like what Federal Way and Des Moines and Sea-Tac did with, with, you know, Pacific Highway. So it's a lot of work and a long haul, but I, I think it's going to be worth it for, for this community in the long run. And that brings us to the end of our agenda. And if there is nothing else, I would like to say thank you all for being here and I will call this meeting adjourned and I wouldn't be a Lacey meeting if I did not say, "You keep it classy, Lacey." This meeting is adjourned.